Chief Mantella, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, without God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's moved in seconded. Any changes or comments?
Just, just one question, Mr. Chair. At the seven forty-five item regarding the dedication of the town report, should we include in that the possible cover photo, which I think we decided on at our last meeting?
I think that's an appropriate suggestion.
So that would be, I would amend that our agenda say dedication and cover photo of town report.
So do we need a motion and a second on that? Or can we just add it to Mary Lee's?
Mine either way.
Then, no other changes, no other discussion? So can we, all in favor of the agenda as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Okay, next thing is the approval of the minutes.
I made the motion that we approved the minutes of one nine twenty-three.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the minutes of January ninth. Is there any discussion?
I've got a couple of changes.
I'm ready.
The bottom of the first page sucker book should be capitalized because it's a particular book. Um, at the top of the next page, I don't understand, Mr. Also shouted out to Jeff Jordan. Shouted out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
That was one of my corrections as well. I was going to suggest commended Jeff Jordan.
I would agree with that because that's what he did. And he's very happy with their effort.
Okay.
So you got that, Allison?
Yes, I was just putting in exactly what he stated.
Yeah, he said I want to give a shout out to those guys.
I think for clarity in the future, if you could change that, I'd appreciate it, Allison, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, the next line is the brief discussion the board had no opposition. You shouldn't see that. Get rid of the T.
Sorry, what page you on, Mary Lee?
Page two, under the town report, cover photos fireworks. The last line is this discussion the board had no, it should be no opposition instead of not opposition.
Yep, got it.
Down is under recreation. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine lines. It says dictates as the decisions on the building needs, make that a plural, to be made jointly. And on page three, um, we're talking about Beverage King and it says Ann Boutwell stated she has not heard back from the police chief, but she doesn't believe that there is any outstanding concern instead of or or of.
Perhaps the thing to do is strike the words or and of and just put and have concerns be plural.
Yes.
That would be clear.
That's all like I have.
Mr. Mark?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I wasn't certain Bob with which vote you voted on, which you didn't. Um, there's a point which it says that you joined the meeting. That's at the bottom of the second page. Uh, I assume you would agree that you didn't vote on the earlier motions on the first page?
No, not on the first page. I came in after Tim Gilbert's discussion.
And then on the third page, there were three votes taken, all of which are recorded as four zero. I assume that you probably voted in the affirmative on those as well.
I believe I did.
Which would make those five zero. Uh, second comment. I agree with the sucker brook, that one of mine. On the bottom of the first paragraph of the second page, second page, first paragraph, instead of the word from, coordinate the efforts from the sewer back up in September, I think, or would be more appropriate. Um, in the third paragraph, under the Brooklyn County Solid Waste District update, one, two, seven lines. The, there's a sentence that begins explanation of some ideas that the grant programs should be used for. I think we should add T. Gilbert provided further explanation of some ideas. In the last sentence of that paragraph, uh, I'd ask if revenues went down. The next sentence is T. Gilbert anticipate trash will go down next year, but cannot be guaranteed. Um, I think it would be more reflective of my recollection of the meeting if we said, T. Gilbert anticipates plural that the amount of trash and hence revenues will go down next year, but cannot be guaranteed. Um, I hate to be the arch Cromerian, but in the middle of that next recreation paragraph, Mary Lee has suggested that need should be plural, but since it follows, uh, a noun that's it, that is plural, decisions on the building need to be made jointly. I think it's correct as written. Um, in the last paragraph of that page, uh, number two, uh, we talk about the planning commission and endorsement of Michael Jones' appointment as interim, but it says internem zone administrator. The spelling of in internum should be corrected. In, on the third page, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lines down in the select board budget discussion paragraph, uh, we say M. Jones felt a lot could be community involvement at those fields. I think we should add the words accomplished by in front of community. And that, oh, I'm sorry. Um, that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Is there anything else, Bob?
Uh, yeah. Well, I haven't given you anything yet, so.
Well.
I do have one.
To the other two.
I do have one thing. Uh, under Tim Gilbert, Rotten County Solid Waste District update, how? Allison, how confident are you are that Tim Gilbert stated the tipping fees are going up a dollar, a five percent increase? I believe, I believe he meant surcharge.
I believe you're correct.
Did he say surcharge?
Said tipping fees, but.
He said, he said tipping fees, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that's, I'm ninety percent sure that needs to be surcharged, but.
Well, he was, he was talking about surcharge.
Yeah.
It is sur, the surcharge is one, one, one hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I don't know if that can be changed, if that's what he said, his tipping fees, but.
Was the tipping fees didn't.
No.
They're a different animal.
That wouldn't do nothing for, yeah, that's basically.
Um, our parliamentarian has a suggestion.
Oh, yeah, not a suggestion as a parliamentarian, but as in a previous meeting, sometimes it's advisable to put a bracketed comment or a parenthetical comment following an accurate report of what a person said, so that we don't mislead citizens. We could add, uh, in fact, uh, Mr. Gilbert may have been talking about the surcharge, which is going up one dollar.
Does that make sense to you, Allison?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Good catch on that.
No, that's, that's enough.
All right, so, um, it's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes of January ninth as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? No, it's not on the agenda. Should we approve the minutes of January sixteenth, or should we wait until it's on the agenda? What do you think, uh, Mr. Mark?
I, I think for something like a review and approval of minutes, it probably will take, you know, a standard.
All right, then, I would entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes of January sixteenth. Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is, we just got these handed to us just now.
Oh.
That's, I believe.
Explains why I didn't look at them earlier.
Because you didn't have it earlier, I think.
I'm not sure if these ones I emailed or not.
You, you did email that.
Okay.
I, I guess I'm, I would think we should, uh, postpone the consideration of the minutes of the meeting of January sixteenth until our next meeting.
Bring your motion.
If you prefer I do that, I will do.
I think that's probably wise. Thank you.
I will draw my motion.
All right, moving on. Citizens' comments or concerns, items not on the agenda. What is your name, Martha?
Martha Clifford, Recreation.
Would you be kind enough to approach? You can bring a chair if you like, so that the mic can pick up your voice.
Allison, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, um, so for me to get some more information on the petition or the article that you, uh, board said that they were going to put on the ballot for the March election. Um, do you have the wording?
We have two versions of a warning to discuss tonight, and I think it might be appropriate to discuss this at that time. Um, I'm going to ask our parliamentarians, and you know this as well, what do you think? Should we wait until?
It says on the agenda, yeah, I think we should.
I think it would be appropriate to discuss it at that point.
Is, is it on the agenda?
The warning is. And this is part of that, so, or would be part of it.
Eight oh five, eight oh five, I think is what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, the twenty twenty-three warning approval. We'll look forward to the discussion. Anything else? Item, um, citizens' comments, items not on the agenda. Anything on Zoom, Mike?
Anybody on Zoom have an item not on the agenda they want to discuss? Please unmute yourself.
Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to the Police Department report.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, we'll go over the report for December. Um, December was a kind of a fickle month. Uh, we were busy with some storms which affected, uh, what we did, especially when we had the EOC open up. Um, calls were down a little bit, traffic stops were down. There's really nothing that stands out outside of those really two things. We always get more, more vehicle complaints in the winter. That would be anybody just driven off the road, not necessarily an accident or something else. Any questions on the call service?
There's just one from me.
George.
Tickets are one part of what they.
Yeah.
Tradition, is that because of the two star?
Uh, winter, usually we don't write a lot in the winter because of weather, roads. Plus, we are down in Austin, so.
Okay, I just thought it was curious that, uh.
That is why, though.
Because people don't stop driving faster, they just, while they're in storms, they do.
But with weather, it does make a difference for us. I really don't want my guys out there chasing cars when the, when the weather's crappy.
Totally makes sense, thank you.
Uh, arrests, we were down, so December was kind of a, kind of a strange month where it was kind of quiet, but yeah, it wasn't. And you see the traffic poll were way down, though we normally would get, we usually get around a hundred on the average. But this month, this last month was, yeah. Nothing stands out there. Uh, to move on to the.
Yes, can you just touch on, just?
Yes, sir.
Just for the recording, can you touch on what community outreach means? What is that?
The community outreach is doing the, um, food deliveries, stuff like that, that we would do for the community.
Okay.
Mr. Mark?
Yeah, just a question about the, uh, criminal arrest section, Chief. Uh, I, I'm not familiar with the term IFO, offense, IFO child. What does that mean?
In front of.
That's if you committed a criminal offense in front of the child, that's actually against the law.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm going to move forward, go to the, we did call service of Castleton. Um, that's, that's about what we're, you know, we're, we're not having a lot of calls at the university. Uh, we do have some, obviously, when they're on campus. Nothing stands out there. Uh, then the backup. Pretty consistent with that. Very, the biggest one that we really backed up, that's mostly at night.
Chief, when you back up Hubbard, and is that, you're actually backing up VSP?
Yes.
So I figure.
Same with Holden.
Makes sense.
They had a couple of big incidences, uh, almost to their occasions. Um, so, as, as we explained, you know, the other section, we have, you know, some of the reason for the storms and, and obviously we're down in Austin, and we had the EOC response. Uh, we talked about going to Castle Meadows when we checked on those seniors, which we, after all that, we did a huge, uh, after action review on that. And I thought that went very well. Uh, we covered a lot of things during that period. Uh, Christmas events, obviously, holidays. Um, arrest, okay, we covered that. Business, we're still doing a lot of boat patrols, checking businesses. Um, in reference to December, because the university was out, I don't think those staffs have changed, actually. Uh, they left on the sixteenth of December, and they just came back last week, so. We didn't see them for a while. We just did our sex offender registry compliance checks. So there's six, six offenders that live in Castleton. They were found to be in compliance.
What, what does that mean? What?
Those are, those are the, we, we, quarterly, we have to do sex offender checks. Anybody's registered as sex offenders, uh, sex offender? It's the police department's responsibility to make sure they live there. And if anything's changed, if they, if they don't live there in a different address, then they're not found compliant.
Okay.
So we have made contact with them. And leave that up us. So then we talk about the Castle cares. We delivered eighty-two boxes in December eighteen, uh, which is always, it's all, which is always fun. We picked up a few other ones also. Um, I do have one more thing to cover. Any questions on that stuff, on the actual reported side?
Mr. Town Manager, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just. Is Chief, is there any, I, I want to ask Chief if there's anything going on in Fair Haven where there's, you guys are having to cover because they don't have, they don't have people on?
Uh, we're not covering them, let's say that much, but there are, there are nights that, uh, that I've been told that they don't have any coverage. Or somebody, or they leave, so. Dispatch knows, unless it's an emergency. Date's got to go, and a week got to go. But it has to be an emergency. If it's something that's not an emergency, they hold it for the officer. They should have a protocol. I don't know what the protocol is. Uh, whether they contact the chief, if anybody can come out, I don't.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring it up because it seems like they're getting, they have gaps in their coverage out there, and if it's an emergency, and there's something going on where an officer needs help, or like a state trooper or whatever, or if there's a domestic in progress, they may get called. Uh, it's just, it's alarming to me that, that the town of Fair Haven has such gaps in coverage and relying on other people to do co- cover their areas, just find it kind of unacceptable.
So let me ask our chief a couple of questions along those lines. What do we, we normally have an officer on duty seven days a week?
No, no, never a gap in our coverage.
So what is, what is our normal coverage?
So six AM to two AM.
Okay, seven days a week.
And then, twenty-four hours, they call me.
Seven days a week.
Absolutely, twenty-four seven.
So what does Fair Haven have for coverage now, do you know?
I don't know exactly. There's, there, I don't know. I really, I mean, I come in, I come in here at five thirty. Uh, sometimes they do have an officer on. Um, they'll have, Dale will be on, uh, but there's days that he doesn't come in until later, or the chief, you know, I, I try and pay attention to that. That's something that I think as a board, if you were going to bring up anything, it should go to their board.
Before we brought up anything, I would be curious to know what their hours of coverage are. How would we go about finding that out? Um, this is a question for Mike more than you.
I can do an inquiry to, to their town manager, but, I mean, personally, I know that they're, they're, they've had a lack of coverage, especially at night.
Well, I, I, there's a big difference between what we think and what we know, so if we can find out what, you know, we, we need to know before we can even have a discussion amongst ourselves before we have one with Fair Haven if we decide to do so. So I would like to know if you could find out what their hours of coverage are on a normal week. It would be a useful tool, it could be a useful tool for our PD as well. To know when there's no coverage in Fair Haven.
Yeah, I mean, the dispatch, dispatch knows, they know what my stance on it, and officers know that unless it's an emergency.
Well, let me, there's, there's my fellow question. If there's a, um, cat in a tree in Fair Haven, they don't call you, do they call VSP?
No, not, not for, not for something like that.
So if there was a domestic in.
Domestic.
They would call you first or VSP first?
Um, that's a good question. I, I, what do you think, Nate? You work nights, what, what do they call?
Experience they will ask us after they've asked the state police to go. You've had time where, where having.
Because who was they?
Uh, their chief typically, if that's called their chief. Cast, that VSP can cover their call.
Well, VSP isn't around, and they. That's, that's, obviously.
All right, so I guess we need to know what their normal coverage is, and we'll start with that. Perhaps we'll have to have another discussion, Chief.
Very much. I mean, before I came here, there was an MOU actually that prior chief had signed with them that we called when they went there, which I actioned right away.
I, uh, I'm not opposed to doing the right thing when we need to do the right thing, but, um, am opposed to providing a neighboring town police coverage at our expense to save them money, if that's what's occurring, and I'm not saying that it is. I'm just saying that we need to have the discussion. Do you agree?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr.?
Well, I would like to ask a question similar to the one you asked, Mr. Chair, and that is, what's the basis of this backup? I know in the case of fire, we have a mutual aid formal agreement. And it would seem to me that that would be an advisable thing to do on an annual basis, you know, agree what we're agreeing to.
Yeah, usually with police departments, it's, it's more informal. There's not actually a mutual aid where, um, if there's an emergency going on in town, uh, where they need backup, we're going to go, an officer needs help. So there's nothing on paper like normally, right, when you do your mutual aid agreements, uh, with police departments, because usually I follow that kind of stuff.
I'll, I'll follow up, but the concern, one of the concerns I have is, they're not going to go unless it's something serious, and if we have an officer hurt in line of duty, we're going to lose an officer here for something that was going on at Fair Haven. That's, those are, because they're never, they're not getting calls to a traffic stop. I mean, it's routine. This is going to be something that's going on pretty big. If we're talking, or wrestling with somebody out there, get hurt, then we're going to lose an officer here.
Well, let's start with what we can, let's find out what the real story is so that we know what the real story is before we continue this conversation. I think we're probably beat death to death for now.
So I just got one more thing to cover, uh, Chairman, and that is the, you know that Mr. Williams did order a car for me, remember, last year?
Yes.
So I ordered it September fourth, so it is in. He, three weeks ago, he said, it bill, he said, three weeks, three weeks ago, that it was going to be up in, uh, come to Montpelier, which is normally where we pick it up. Well, I haven't heard from him. So I handed you out their, the invoice, what it's going to cost. So I'm looking for authorization. Well, there's two things. Number one, do I have the money? Yes, I have fifty-two thousand, about fifty-two thousand in the capital reserve for my vehicles right now. So this cost right here that you see the thirty-nine, seven, one, seven, that is what I'm looking for. If the car comes in this week, I want to be able to ask you, if you give me authorization so that the accountant, town manager can get a check down to the treasurer, and then we can pick it up. Because this is the last meeting, and so, I worry.
I'm not sure what the normal process is here. Normally, there's a check warrant issue, you can leave, fill in the check warrant, and then the check is written. This is outside of that box, so what do you recommend?
I just recommend that we've done this, it's not abnormal, but, um, is to approve the purchase order, and then knowing I'll work with the vendor to get the check cut from the treasurer, and then you'll end up signing the warrant afterwards. But you're authorizing the payment. You've authorized him to order, the chief to order the car. Now, now you're authorizing the payment.
Yeah, I understand. We already authorized him to make the purchase, so now we have to authorize a payment, so I, so we're looking for a motion to approve the thirty-nine, seven, seventeen.
Right.
You have a first order?
I do.
The number of it's perfect.
Oh, so.
I didn't sort of put a toll on there, I'm going to some, some extra tolls here.
Well, it'll be in the minutes what we're approving, so I can write thirty-seven, seven, thirty-seven, seven, seventeen on this.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yes, I stand corrected.
Can you repeat the number again, Dick?
Well, Bob's going to read the, read it. He's going to make a motion. If you're willing.
I, I am willing. Make a motion, we approve purchase order zero, four, nine, seven, six, one, to Key Chevrolet slash GMC for a police cruiser to come out of the capital reserve for a total of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars.
I have a motion, I'll have a second. I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Uh, this is Melanie Comestown, accountant. I, just for clarification purposes, uh, back in January, the select board did approve, um, of the purchase from McGee Ford with enhancements for a total of forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. So my question is, am I to assume that the enhancements are not to exceed the difference between forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars?
You're asking me, Melanie?
I, I.
I'm asking whoever would handle this, because the board's already approved a maximum not to exceed.
I don't have an answer to that, but I will yield to the chief.
Yeah, so, uh, if you look on the price that it, this is just for the car. This is not, does not include the enhancement. So the car originally was forty-one, it's thirty-nine, seventeen. So with enhancements, I believe it was, I don't know what I had in here. I think it's, I think it's going to come out to like fifteen-one and change.
But, but the enhancements of the lights and stuff like that?
Yeah.
That's not, they're not on it right now, so we can do that as.
That's a different vendor anyways.
So, so the reason it changed, because originally the two thousand twenty-two's were thirty-four thousand. So they went up to thirty-nine. So originally, it was based on that amount, but he never ordered the car.
Okay.
So.
So we have to approve the purchase of the car, and then if we're going to exceed what was previously authorized with the enhancements?
Yeah, I got one more thing to add.
That'll be a, that can and should be a separate discussion, I believe.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Well, and it sounds like, uh, with the advancements, uh, we will be exceeding the reserve amount that the chief has.
So here's, here's, here's the, here's the catch. So we do have a, a department that's interested in buying our two thousand fifteen fully. So we do have a, a department that's interested in buying our two thousand fifteen fully. Just gotta take the decals off. I didn't come up with a price of between seven and ten thousand. But that's not done deal yet.
So we authorize you to pay for this car?
Right.
And then what happens?
Then we start getting the parts, and we get to that forty-eight, we'll have a discussion.
And you have fifty-one in your reserve?
Yeah, I'm close to fifty-two. I, I forget fifty-one and I fifty-one something. I'll check with Melanie this week. I don't think that amount was.
It was just under fifty-two.
Well, I think this, in my opinion, is a case of first things first. First thing we had to do is buy the car, then we gotta figure out how to get it equipped.
I do have a question too, Eric.
So, go ahead, Mr. Spalding.
Well, I'm a, I'm a little confused. I'm sure you can fill me in on this, chief. But it's from Key Chevrolet GMC, but it's, it's a Ford Police Interceptor.
Correct. He is the state contractor that gets all the cruisers, whether it's Dodge, GMC, or all of them.
This Key Chevrolet is, is, is the, is the person you're talking about?
Right, right. The name underneath, that's him.
Okay.
He works at two dealers.
So it is not McGee Ford?
No. He has the original motion with McGee Ford. Yeah, it's changed, it's key.
So we gotta dust all this off and revisit this, and it should be on the agenda for the next meeting to or else you and the town accountant and the chief need to get your heads together and find out what the, all the nuances of this are so that we can get it resolved.
Well, I, I think I have it in my head. It's just, uh, the names of the vendor of the, the, uh, business changed. So you made a motion back a year ago, and it's changed names, so we gotta update that. But as far as the difference, um, I, I, I understand where he's at. Get the car. I think we have to get the car, because we've ordered it, we got paper on it. And then he may not be able to put it in service until we get all the accessories and stuff, um, ironed out. But he has some money you've already authorized. It's just not gonna be enough, probably, to get it totally completed.
So it sounds to me like first things first, we gotta, we gotta buy the car.
Yeah.
And then we gotta figure out the rest. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, and I believe we had a second. And is there any more discussion among the board? Mister Mark?
Yeah, I, I, I would, uh, like to request that, uh, at some future point in time, uh, the chief present the board with his, uh, long-range vehicle replacement plan, and its financial.
I think that's I would agree with that. I would, I think I've already had that conversation with you.
I, I have his vehicle replacement financial.
Have we seen that from you, Pete, before? No?
Okay, we need to see that.
And I've been mistaken.
I thought we need to know that we're getting it right when we run the budget.
I thought we'd seen that already.
So I'm gonna, I need, any discussion from any other members of town staff on this motion?
None.
Hearing none, let's, uh, call the, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four, zero, motion passes. So do you need me to sign this, Mike, or?
Yes, he would, no, he's-
What's the date, the twenty, what, or?
How quick will you have this in your possession, Pete?
So does this stay? He called me, say it's actually up in state yet.
Oh, he hasn't called you?
At least ago, he said it was
Yeah.
three weeks out, and I haven't heard from him.
Where, where, where is this guy located?
Oh, he's got two offices. He's got one in South Burlington and one in Mount Hillier.
Okay.
It used to be McGee's, right in Mount Hillier off three oh two.
Okay. So in the not-too-distant future, we're gonna have to have a discussion about how to properly equip this vehicle, and also about vehicle replacements long-term for PD, okay? Anything else before we move on from the board? We're all good, uh?
Mister Chairman, I have a question. Is that, is that gonna, like, the fire department, is he gonna come to the public safety committee to brief his original, his plan?
I believe that's the way we should do it, yes. That makes, totally makes sense. I'm gonna put down there, so I don't mix that up. Alright, we're moving on to, uh, the annual tax track maintenance proposal. I'm going to yield to the town manager on this for a minute.
Thank you. Um, no, this is the, our annual maintenance with, uh, CAI, um, Cardiographic Associates Incorporated. It's thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, that's what we budget for, that's what it is. And this is just the annual maintenance of the system and our, in the database. And it just so happens, it's that time of year, so there's no change to it from last year. No change in price, and no change in the contract.
And it's in the budget.
That's exactly what we budget for, thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll entertain a motion, and then we can have discussion.
I've been signed now, I don't know what-
Yeah, I just wanted to make Mike aware of this screen shot that was behind you, but he's suspended.
It's weird, because it's, I'm still recording, and I will
make a motion that we approve the, uh, contract proposal from Cardiographic Associates Inc. For thirty-five hundred dollars uh, with an additional twenty dollars per building added. Uh, which will be added or changed for the period April one, two thousand twenty-three through March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Do I have a second? I, I'll second it for discussion. Okay, discussion. Well, did you just say twenty dollars for additional building?
We don't, we don't use that feature, though.
Okay, but this says fifteen dollars. I just, if, if he's gonna put it in the motion, do I not see what you're seeing, Joe?
Uh, I got twenty.
Says twenty on page three. Yep, got that. Okay.
And says fifteen on page three.
Yeah, what is page three? It says fifteen per building added or changed.
Oh, that's, that's interesting. Thank you for it.
But we, we don't use that feature with them. We just use the map, the, um, GS mapping maintenance service.
So our motion authorizes the thirty, well, can you amend your motion to just authorize the thirty-five hundred, please?
The move that we, um, authorize the proposal from CIA for, uh, Cardiographic Mapping Services to the period April one, two thousand twenty-three through March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four at the cost of thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll still second it. Been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favors?
I, I, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, I know, Mike, that on the bottom of page one, this refers to, um, variety of formats in which the data might be delivered, including ESRI. Uh, does this require an additional software license?
Uh, that, I, I don't know that answer, Joe. I, whatever, whatever we're using with them right now is what it's all encompassing, it's all included, so we're not paying anything extra. So whatever the, I guess whatever the files are, the type they use in data. Oh, if there's any, if, if, are you saying is there any additional?
Yes, so some of these are, uh, software programs, it's very expensive. And I assume that we have what we need to access the data digitally.
Yes, yes, the system we have access.
And, and the second question has to do with the deliverables on page two. Um, it talks about a complete set bound twenty-four inches by twenty-four inches and two complete sets bound eighteen by eighteen. Uh, does this mean that we actually get free hard copy books from them?
Yeah, I, I've only seen one, but we do get the large, the twenty-four by twenty-four is a big set, so all I can say is, I'm gonna make the assumption that we get eight, the eighteen by eighteen's, but if Melanie, Mary Jo is not here for me to ask that, so. But I'll make a note to make sure that, um, she follows up with us that we get whatever's as delivered as.
And then the, the final words in that sentence are, uh, digital data. Um, I assume that perhaps we also get, or I would hope that we also get, uh, DVD discs with these data files on them.
I will verify. I don't know if it's a DVD or if it's, uh, you know, internal hard drive.
He'd be fine with me. I, I just, you know, I, I think they need some redundancy here. I think we, in our new town office buildings, we, we, we have a lot of fire protection, but we wouldn't wanna lose these valuable documents and not have a backup stored off-site.
We're cloud-based too, so I, I think everything that we're doing is, uh, we, everything we've got now is cloud-based, whether it's our server or Patriot and all that stuff, so we have one server left in there for Patriot in the building, but everything else is cloud-based.
But if you could verify that, I might be reassuring.
Anything else from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, uh, they have a request for use of Crystal Beach? I would entertain a motion for this. Make a motion, we allow the Fairhaven Rotary to use Crystal Beach for their fishing derby on February. There we go. On February twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, those three days. Been moved and seconded that we, uh, the motion's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Who seconded?
I did.
Joe Mark? I, the only comment I'd like to make is they're normal, they're doing their normal thing with the insurance and all that, right, Mike?
They are, yeah.
Okay.
And I was approached by Mr. Calvi. They wanted to put a board up there temporarily, and I said, yeah, go ahead. Uh, security to the ball and someone.
The only concern I have is if there's no ice, but I'm sure they're well aware of that issue. Um, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Moving on, we're going to be a petition for cannabis retail from Janet Curry. Janet's not here. So I would entertain a motion to accept this petition.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we accept the petition for uh, the sale of retail cannabis in the town of Castleton. Is there any more discussion on this?
Uh, did you make the motion?
Joe did. Joe Mark made the motion. Mary Lee Harris seconded.
Yeah.
Um, so we're going to include this on our ballot, uh, if, assuming we approve this, it's going to be included on ballot as written, agreed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I speak here?
I'm sorry, who's speaking, please?
Uh, Mary McIntyre, I just have a question on this.
Go ahead.
So last year, I believe we voted on this twice, once, once on the ballot. And then we brought, it was brought into a second vote, but at town meeting, I thought it was a bit embarrassing that there was questions from the townspeople about this on the ballot, and there was no one who could answer questions. I don't have any problem with this being on the, the ballot, but can we ask Janet to be at the town meeting to answer questions? And she's the one that keeps putting this on the ballot?
Yes, we can ask her to be there.
So that our townspeople can ask her questions, because I think you guys were put into an awkward position last year trying to come up with answers. Or, you guys didn't put on the ballot.
We will do that, Mary. We will ask her to attend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, I just wanna speak to that. In Janet's defense, she had several meetings that taxpayers could have came to, and very few showed up at those meetings. So.
That's a very true statement.
I just wanted to throw that out there. She went above and beyond by having meetings to answer everybody's questions.
Actually, I went to at least one of them.
I did too.
I, I know that she, I know that she did, Bob, after the March meetings and before the special election. I don't know about the first, before the, the original vote, but it's not that here nor there, people still would have questions.
Yeah, I'm sure she'll be at the town meeting.
We're going to ask her, you can't make them, but we will request her presence.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So we haven't called this question yet, correct?
No.
Any more discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, Mike, you have to include that in, or I don't know how that works, but that has to be added to the ballot.
It is on the ballot.
It should be on the-
Oh, is it on the?
It should be on the ones you got.
Well, that's right, it is. I remember reading this earlier today. Alright, moving on, um, liquor license approval for the Dog LLC first and third class with outside consumption.
Mister Chairman, where do you find the outside consumption?
I'm reading it off the, uh,
Oh, I see, it's a separate page.
And there should be a separate, because that's a separate, uh, license now, the outside consumption.
Thank you, I see that now. I would move that we include these three uh, applications from Dog LLC.
I'll second it. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, I have a question for the chief. Is there any concerns on your part on this?
No, the only concern that we had, not the licenses, was the noise last year off Pine Street, and about the outdoor stuff.
As long as they're in compliance with our noise ordinance.
They are. It's just noise. Daytime, and, I mean, he didn't have late stuff. Was reasonable.
Okay.
His back place is like, right there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of the geography, so.
No, I'm just saying.
So they, they're already serving down there?
No, 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 no.
Special event, no, that was-
Oh, okay, okay.
The special ones.
That was a, those comments were from Chief Mantello and a gentleman in the back who I do not recognize.
I'm Paul Martin on the other.
Okay. So the other comment was from Paul Martin, um, any other discussion from the board? From members of the town? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Suckerbrook Pump Station backup. This is a, uh, request from Rick Mantello. So should, Mister Mark, I want your opinion as a parliamentarian. Should we have discussion before we entertain a motion on this particular issue?
I don't think so.
I'm, I'm going to ask for a motion for discussion on this particular request.
I would move that we, uh, authorize, uh, the town manager to compensate Mister Mantillo uh, for some not to exceed one thousand ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents uh, for the cost incurred replacing his backflow valve as a result of a, a problem we had a couple of weeks ago with the Suckerbrook Pump Station.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
They have a motion in a second. Discussion from the board? The town manager, go ahead, Mike.
I was, like, we could take this from the sewer reserve.
Well, that was gonna be my question, is where would the money come from?
Because I don't know how it's gonna affect the operating budget only six months through the year, but I'm assuming with a probably ninety five percent certainty that it could come out of the operating budget, but, um, I just know what your pleasure is.
Is there a minimum on the, um, reserve, like for some other items? Like I know for the-
Truck fund, it's five thousand.
Capital investment stuff is, uh, purchases is five thousand dollars in our, up our policy. But this is certainly a capital purchase, but.
Okay.
Mister, Mister Chairman?
Go ahead.
Or Mister Town Manager?
Go ahead.
Um, just from a, Melanie Combs, town accountant, um, just from a historical perspective, I believe for the most part, the reserve for the sewer fund has been used for, um, major capital improvements, um, kind of stockpiling money for things like our current twenty-year upgrade. So I just wanted to throw that out- So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
The same, same with all the other reserves, five thousand is really the limit, but I. I can take it out of the, out of their operating budget, I just got to look at what lines to take it from, so it, it will just affect the overall, that's all. We might overspend the line to get, get there, but. I'm pretty confident we can come up with a thousand and ninety-seven dollars basically. Out of, out of the operating budget.
Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a proponent. For Mister Pontella, but I'm a little confused as. His total costs are like seven thousand dollars short, but he's only looking for a thousand dollars.
Yeah, he uh, were you at the previous meeting when? Jim allowed him to speak during the regular select board meeting because he didn't, wasn't present during the.
I think I might have missed that.
Commissioners meeting.
Yeah, I think I might have missed that.
Well, Mister Mont, Pontella made a pretty good case for. Or he, he, he did a pretty good rendition of all the discomfort and angst that was caused with this whole issue. For him and his, at his residence. And one of the things that he felt was required to prevent this in the future was. Backflow preventer on his sewer line, so. He had one installed, but he feels that that wouldn't have been necessary, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. That would not have been necessary had. We hadn't had a, a failure at the pump station.
Okay.
So he was willing to. To basically pay for the shortfall for all the damage done to his home, but would like us to pay for the backflow preventer. That he had installed to prevent this from happening again.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's, that's happened on another, that's, that piece of the insurance company, they'd recommend. After like claim like this, to put one on there, and they paid for the last one that went on under thirty. And if Mister Pontillo didn't have that put on there, we had the backup in right before Christmas, and it would have been in his house. The backflow prevented, prevented it, so.
You see what I'm asking? He's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna absorb the five thousand dollars.
He's already agreed to do that.
Okay, okay, I just, that's very nice of him.
I think he's been very gracious through this whole nightmare.
Okay.
Okay. I read, I read something before in the minutes that he was looking for seven thousand dollars, so then I was kind of shocked it.
I don't believe he ever actually said he was looking for seven, he did say he cost him seven.
Okay, it was in the minutes here.
I don't recall his exact verbiage, so.
I may be right, but.
I'll just leave it alone.
I would.
Okay.
So any other discussion from the board? So we have a motion in a second to reimburse Mister Pontello for his backflow preventer only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on.
Were we backflow or backhoe?
Yes, now it's time to talk about a backhoe. Replacement, so this presentation is probably either in our Public Works Director or Highway Foreman's bailiwick, so. Which of you gentlemen would prefer to speak first?
I can, I guess, I don't know if Dave's on there.
He was. I'm here, uh, fill in as.
You want you to speak or you want Brent to speak?
Brent's fine.
Aye, aye.
Several months ago, you guys probably remember.
Brent, can you step forward please, so that Allison can hear you all?
You can bring a chair if you want.
Yeah, I'm getting pretty tired.
I know you've had a long day.
Long night, long day, so. We had a pickup on order for the transfer station. We asked you guys permission to cancel that because we knew the backhoe was going to be in the future, we didn't really need a pickup. You guys agreed, we started shopping then, we've been looking for used backhoe. Everything we've found has been sixty to a hundred thousand dollars for used backhoe. Three to five thousand hours and no warranty. We weren't looking for a new one, but the, this is the salesman that sold us our loader, he calls. I, I, I called him a few weeks ago and told him, if you get anything nice used, come in, let me know. Fell out of the blue and he said another company had ordered this backhoe. Their contract had fell through, he has it sitting out at the lot in Massachusetts, and you see the price, a hundred and fifteen thousand, which is. Not that far off from the used ones we're buying. That's with an extended warranty, a thirty-five hundred hour warranty. Seven years, thirty-five hundred hour warranty. But the offer weren't going to last long because there was another municipality who's doing the same thing as we are, shopping for a backhoe. So I thought it's prudent to bring the offer to you, because if we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on the backhoe, if somebody else has already thrashed. We're going to buy it as is, no warranty. Kind of makes sense to spend the extra fifteen thousand and buy a new one. Have the warranty and start from scratch.
It's just have an extended reach.
It does, so. You guys probably see in one of them sheets, I broke down the, the three. The three departments shipped it in for it, the reason for that is we've. Going with the DPW thing, we've been digging some of the sewer lines, using the down excavator. And ran a couple, because our machine doesn't have much reach. One of the ideas behind the new backhoe for the transfer station is they don't need a backhoe up there all the time, we pack. Somebody comes in with demo, we pack a van, other than that, it sits there. We only use it when we move the bins out, I think we're averaging right now on the roll off like. Thirteen hours of range, so the backhoe's not getting used much. So it's going to be a multi-department piece of equipment, in other words, we can go dig sewer lines rather than renting an excavator, we use the backhoe. This has twenty-one, twenty-one feet, four inches of reach from the center. So it's quite a bit more reach than our excavator. The other idea behind it is storm damage. Last couple of weeks, we've had these big storms. Every time we go to clean up trees, we got to trail our excavator, we got to unload it, load the trees in the back of the truck, re-trailer the excavator and move to the next one. Be pretty handy to have something on wheel that we can drive, clean up our mess, move to the next job. It also will allow me the flexibility of having two crews of doing work instead of. Only one piece of equipment, because the backhoe we have now, you guys see the pictures. We're, we're not digging out the flow of bridge road to clean up trees, it probably won't make it there and back.
I just, I looked at it several times in the last six months.
They're only offering us four thousand dollars for trade. For that backhoe. And I was telling Mike, I know we don't want to add more equipment to our fleet, but it seems to me for four thousand dollars. We should get whatever goodness is left in that, and if scrap metal prices are down, we'll park it in the pit. No, see the motor blows. Park it in the pit, when scrap, scrap metal prices go back up, we'll load it on the trailer and we'll haul it to M and Bs.
What does that weigh, Brent?
I, don't quote me, but I want to say it's twenty-one thousand pounds, a little over twenty-one thousand pounds.
Ten ton, ten and a half ton.
So. I just for four thousand dollars, all we do at the transfer station is this all day long, which is terrible on any piece of equipment. We might as well leave that up there. Until it implodes, right now, the problem is we don't have a backup. If the backhoe, motor blows in that backhoe tomorrow, we're going to be up there with our excavator tracking across the blacktops, back bins.
I've got two.
The ideal situation.
I've got two questions for you, Brent, when you, when the quote says this is in stock, that means if we pulled the trigger, they could put it on the trailer and bring it up.
So, yes, it's sitting in Massachusetts, and I have until the end of the meeting tonight to call the town, whether we want it or not, and if not, the next town to buy it tomorrow.
I understand, um. And you only need to finance thirty-five K?
If we go with the plan that I have there, so you see the highway.
I saw the plan, it makes sense.
Yep.
I didn't check it against reserve accounts, but I, I would trust that you already have.
Yep.
Um, I had another question, what was it? What's the reach on our excavator?
Perhaps we should have a motion on the floor here.
Didn't have discussion on it, Mister Pearlman? Well, I, I considered that, but I, Brent was on the roll, so, um, so I would entertain a motion concerning this backhoe.
There are twenty minutes left, fall asleep back there, so.
Well, before we do that, I have a question, uh, for the town manager and or the highway foreman. Hundred and fifty-nine will do it? Or do you need more than that?
I don't know you want to put on, sorry.
That is for the backhoe, it already has the thumb on it, so that's the backhoe and the thumb, so that'll do it. The only thought, and I'm throwing this out here. I didn't add it in the quote, the only thought I had is for. Another ten thousand dollars, we could add the ditching bucket with it. Actually has the pistons on it, and the reason I bring that up is because the Wayne Roy on our excavator is wore out again. So when you guys bought our excavator, you put a Wayne Roy on it, you know what I'm talking about, Bobby, the problem with the Wayne Roy is. It stays on all the time, so when the digging bucket's on, that Wayne Roy's on.
I don't know what a Wayne Roy is.
It's so you can tilt the bucket and you're doing ditches, the problem is with that on there with the digging bucket is. When you're digging culverts across asphalt roads, you wear it out. So now we got a bunch of slop in the bucket, so my thought was is if we bought the ditching bucket with the new backhoe. I could put it on the Cabalco excavator and get that Wayne Roy off. And have one that can go on either machine, so I'm just throwing that out there, but that is another ten thousand dollars.
Is that something we could do at a later time?
Yep. We sure can.
This is the actual. Question again is a hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars, we'll, we'll bring it to our building, there's no overcharge in there as well or anything like that.
He brings it in the train.
I just want to make sure if we authorize this, that we authorize, it's going to get the job done. I'm listening, Mister Mark.
Make a motion?
I am.
I would move that we authorize, uh, the purchase of a. Two thousand twenty-three kind of filler four fifteen loader backhoe from. Milton Cat. Cost of one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll second it. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion from the board?
This is actually the machine that you'll be getting.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay.
Do we want five year or seven year?
This is with the seven year warranty, right?
Seven year warranty, but she's asking about the financing.
Right.
I would prefer to go with the seven year. The only reason why, and I put that in there is I've been, I'm trying to figure out how to. Upgrade our equipment without asking you guys to put a bunch of more money in our sinking fund on our twenty-five year replacement items, it makes sense. Go seven years, because then my lease payments are smaller, so then I can have, you know, I can have the back one, the loader on lease payment at the same time. And still afford it without asking you for more money.
That doesn't really need to be in our motion though, does it?
Nope. I was just answering her question.
I understand it.
Excuse me, Joe, could you repeat the amount please, one fifty-nine?
One fifteen nine hundred, one one five nine hundred.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the board?
I just have a very small question, what is the TFS reserve fund?
Transfer station. Oh, transfer station. Which is a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars.
I, I just have a comment, yeah. Alright, um, Joe, are you done?
I am.
That was going to be my question, suggestion to you. If we could keep the old one and use it at the transfer station.
Yep.
I know in times past, they needed it, you guys had it out on the job, and it was kind of like a.
They've already bought the metal, bought the metal last year to replace the floor of it.
Okay, good.
So that's what I'd like to do, is keep, like I said, run it to the motor, any major repair, we're not going to fix.
Okay.
Hydraulic hose goes, keep fixing it, keep running it.
Just a wild guess, how long you think it's going to last?
Our talent, it, it could go tomorrow, it might last us five more years, I have no idea.
Fair enough.
What it doesn't do is lift very much anymore, it's like.
It's like that old tractor that pulls the trailer for the fence fixing, right, it's just going to run till it doesn't. Um, anything else from the board? Town manager? You or Dave got anything else to add? And I'm going to call.
I thought Brent did a good job, uh, explaining it, and that is an old machine, um, but. Anyway, I thought that the, uh. The seven year, just to reiterate what Brent said, we sat down, we ran the numbers. And I think in the long run, that's going to help us out. That's all I got.
Okay, Dave, who are you?
That would, that would be the, uh, DPW director.
Okay, I just for Allison's benefit, she needs to know who's speaking. Alright, anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? They're done.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, Dave too.
Dedication for the town report, I'm going to yield to. Mister Mark, uh, this one, I, he had a suggestion via email today that I thought was a good one, so I'm going to yield the floor to him.
Well, at our last meeting, we, uh, agreed to put, uh. Two photos on the cover of the town report, one being fireworks. And the other being of the, uh, parade. And, uh. Nothing's happened, he had that meeting, and that. Late last night, I began to have another idea about what we might do with the town report, and that is to put. A photograph of Gilmore Home Center before the fire on the cover. And have as a dedication. Uh, two themes, one being, uh, our local businesses, because I think. Uh, that fire illustrates just how, uh. Vulnerable we are to losing some of the really core businesses of this community, they would be. Their loss would be so tragic for us. But also, uh, a second theme, uh, related to the emergency personnel who. Uh, in large numbers, uh, fought that fire and, and at, uh, significant personal risk. So I. Wrote something up, which I think I've distributed to you all, if not, I have a couple of extra copies here. But that would be my, uh, proposal. So I guess it would be that we rescind this earlier board decision regarding the cover. And, uh. Make a new motion. To put a photo of Gilmore's on the cover coupled with this text in the dedication section. Of the town report. Anyone?
Let's a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion from the board?
Which, which one are you going with, Joe? And, uh, these are a little bit different, right?
Yeah, one of them says part one, part two, not that one.
Not this one.
But I, I think this, the rescind motion should be separate from the other motion. Like this is, this is what I'm.
Right here, I got it already, if you want to keep that, Joe, give it to somebody else, yep.
Yeah.
I got this.
And we all want a copy.
Did you hear what he said, Nick?
Bob, did you actually make them, did somebody make the motion and second it already for?
Well, I second it.
I, I, I would. Make the motion that we rescind. Our earlier decision to put two photographs, fireworks and parade. For the town report.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's, let's tackle that one first. Do we have any discussion on rescinding the original decision for the cover of the town report? Board discussion? Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, move on, Joe.
I would move that we, uh. Put a photograph of Gilmore's Home Center before the fire. On the cover of the town report and. Have, uh, in our dedication section, the text which I shared with the board this evening.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'd like to second that again, yes.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion from the board?
I'd like this read, and so everybody would know it.
Okay, would you please do so?
Dedication, two thousand twenty-three Castleton Town Report.
When it was, I'm, Allison, could you hear, Mary Lee?
Yeah, but if somebody leave a copy, it'll just attach to the minutes, I couldn't possibly keep up with typing it.
Okay, well, I just wanted to be sure if you could hear, other people on Zoom could as well.
Our local businesses. This report covers photo is a painful reminder of what we lost. When on January fifteenth of this year. The main facility of Gilmore Home Center, one of Castleton's commercial cornerstones burned to the ground. It also reminds us how much enterprise, large and small. Contribute to the vitality, services and job opportunity of our town. Indeed, without them, Castleton is merely a town, with them, we are a community. Because of Castleton's businesses, we can get our gas, milk, apples, lettuce. Burgers, ice cream cones, cupcakes and medicine right here. We can get our insurance and healthcare from local providers, can have our teeth. Teeth and roof fix, furnaces service, plumbing repair, lawn's mowed. And driveways plowed, all by entrepreneurs who are also our neighbors. And prior to one fifteen twenty-three, we could get our nuts and bolts and paint from Gilmore's. We are grateful for these businesses that have set up shop in Castleton. We are grateful for these businesses that have set up shop in Castleton and dedicated this town report to them. Long made their prosper and quickly made Gilmore rebuild. Our emergency personnel. If the recent disastrous fire reminds us of the importance of town businesses, it also highlights the critical role emergency responders pay in addressing the sometime tragic events and crises that can occur in the life of a community. January fifteen, put on display the commitment and competence of Castleton Police, medical first responders, and especially volunteer fire department personnel. We are deeply grateful for their service and dedication. This report to them as well.
Thank you. Any more discussion from the board? Anyone else? Anything, Dad? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Joe.
Motion carries. Thank you, Joe, for your effort on this. Splendid idea.
Great job.
So you got this, Mike?
Love it. Nuts and bolts.
That was good. That was well, I I really liked that, Joe. I thought that was an excellent idea when I read the first draft earlier today. Okay, moving on. Transfer station revenue and Hubbardan assessment. This is uh all the town managers. You're on, Mike.
Right. Um, so today I I sat down with our accountant and we reviewed um the revenue lines for the transfer station as well as uh the budget. And there's a simple formula. Um, it's on our sheet. That calculates their revenue. Or I'm sorry, their assessment on that the town charges each year from them to use the transfer station. So it's, they they pay twenty percent of the operating budget and they get fifteen point zero six percent of recycling. And when you subtract the recycling that they they get in revenue from the amount they pay from the uh twenty percent of the operating cost, it comes up the delta and and like me, I had it sitting in front of me.
You showed it to me earlier.
I know, it's thirty-four thousand or something, but where that piece of paper went, I don't know.
I didn't take it from you. So do we actually have to approve a number tonight?
No, no, I think it was just that it's already, they they're board meetings tonight, so it typically doesn't go before right here. Doesn't really go before the board for uh approval so much as they go, because it's just, it's just numbers. But just so you guys are aware, that Hubbardon is going to um, their assessment is thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
And they're aware of it.
As of um Melanie uh confirmed, but she was gonna call Dawn up there today, this afternoon to let her know, so they had it before their meeting. Can you confirm that, Melanie?
I did send it off to Dawn. I did not hear back from her, however, so I can only assume. I can check whether or again tomorrow.
But the information was sent, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So do we, we don't have to have to take any action on this, correct? Any comments from the board?
I have a comment. I'm listening. As usual. I I just don't understand how they pay twenty percent of the operating costs. But they only get fifteen percent of the revenue is, you understand numbers better than I do, Mike.
And we we wrestle this thing every, every year, I think, saying where no one has any record in Hubbardon or Castleton without probably digging through um printed copies of minutes to figure out where that came from. And I say the same thing each year is probably sometime before the rates get set before July first. If there's, there should have be a discussion about is, is this fair?
But do you know what I'm getting at? They're paying twenty percent of the cost. Why wouldn't they get twenty percent of the revenue?
I I have no idea, but.
Okay, I I just, that's what I don't see fair here.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, I wish I could answer that for you, but we've done that. We've even called Hubbardon and said, how did you guys know where this come from and what else?
And they're comfortable with this though, correct?
Yeah, they're they're, I think they're they're grateful to be able to use the transfer station.
Yeah, I understand that. I, you know what's coming out of my mouth next? I would hope someday we can nail down more of what the actual percentage of them using that. I've asked to have when they bring in demo, they make a little slip on every demo. Just put on the slip, Castleton? Hubbardon. That would take care of all the demo. We could get a better handle on what percentage of the demo that coming into the transfer station. The garbage is a little more, a little more entailed, a little more work to be done. I would think maybe not do it for the whole year, but for like six months. Have a dump trailer set off to the side. All Hubbardon trash goes in that, running across the scale, dump it into the trip, transfer station bin. And then the Castle thing could go right into the bin. That would give you a six month average of what? Percentage. I I know, it's a, it's a little more work, I know.
Well, it's it's probably a lot of confusion, but um I I believe, now I'll confirm right or no, I believe after you la- the last time, they're keeping track of that kind of stuff, but they're like bags, like individual bags, that's the.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to keep it separate and then when the truck was full, dump truck or something. I know, I know, but it would just give us an idea. We don't have to do it year after year after year, but.
What, just out of curiosity, I'll get to you soon. What uh what, what's the ratio of uh permits sold?
You you want me to guess? I I I don't know. I I think Hubbardon had like three hundred permits or something. I don't even know.
How many do we sell?
Seven hundred. I think we, I looked at the other day and I may have it right here. Um, we, I looked at it and said, if you raise the scale fee five dollars, it would ra- it would only raise seven thousand dollars. So I I could do the math, reverse math.
No, I'm talking about just the permit thing.
That's my permit. I multiply it times the permits.
Um, can I, can I comment to that, Dick?
Sure.
The problem with that is is our, one of our private haulers picks up fifty, sixty, a hundred customers in Hubbardon. None of them buy dump stickers, not very many of them buy dump stickers. So that would be a problem of doing it with the dump stickers.
I I I realize this is a pretty hard, small string to unroll to figure out how long it is. I know that, so. Um, all right, Sue, go ahead.
I just want to give you everybody about how wonderful it is to have the transfer station paid. What a difference. What a difference and how organized and needless these days.
Allison, that was Sue Day. Did you hear?
It's great with the stormwater too.
Yes.
Okay. That, so it's, it's with the drains there. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this, guys?
I'm just guessing. We may have to watch the movie Alice's Restaurant before we have our next conversation about this.
Yes.
I never saw the movie. I listened to the album many times. I used to have it memorized.
Well, it gets down to checking mailing labels and it addresses the stuff that isn't fair.
Oh, God.
We're doing that on the stuff we find out at the bird's eye turnaround.
Yeah, you need to. Yeah. Yeah, there was a, we've had other repeated dumpsters in other parts of town too. All right, we're going to move on to the budget surplus. This again, I'll yield to the town manager.
So without having anything in front of you, you're gonna have to take my word at this. Uh, so talk, so Melanie and I sat down today, talked about um this budget. And there's a budget surplus, um, two hundred, I'm gonna give you two hundred twenty-seven thousand.
Is that an audited number, Mike?
That's, Melanie's talked to the auditor, but I think that she's very confident, according to her, that that's an accurate number.
Okay.
Um, so today would have been the last day really to get on a ballot if they wanted the voters to vote on to the use of that. But when we plugged it into the, the municipal tax rate formula. That uh that two hundred twenty-seven thousand. The difference between last year's tax rate and this year's is point zero zero one two. So we're almost, we're getting so close to making the, that hundred seventy-six dot thousand dollars that or hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars more in the, in the operating budget than last year, plus the ninety thousand from the Castleton Village School. We're getting closer to closing that gap to zero and the formulas, in the formula, instead of, we we don't have the new grand list numbers, so we use last year's. Our assessor believes that there'll probably be a million dollars, maybe a little bit more change. So that means that number, that gap uh will close even more. So we, if they it it'll go back into the, the two hundred twenty-seven will go back uh and be figured into revenue in the, for the tax rate, and it will pay it down quite a bit. So I just wanted to let you know that there's some good news out of this. Um, if you, if you had any other ideas of use of the money, then that would be counter to that, what I just said.
So if we just let it ride like we have done historically at other times in the past, it'll basically give us a tax neutral year.
Pretty close.
Or pretty close to a tax neutral year.
We don't have to have a motion on that.
No, we do not. If we do nothing, it automatically just rolls over.
Okay. But it's just.
That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah, but it's, it's great that, you know, with everything that's going on and and the contentious parts of the budget that um the surplus from last year will help pay this thing down, so it's gonna be kind of nominal.
It would be nice to have a tax neutral year. Sue, do you have a comment?
I do.
Sue Day, again.
Sue Day, uh. I would like to see some of that money go to the, to going to school and helping the recreation department.
Well, the issue you have is to get it on the, the warning, you'd have to make decisions tonight.
Well, there was a petition that was supposed to go funding uh the town meeting and I don't know what happened.
There's about, there's a, there's about article on there. We are going to be discussing that, but let me just make a comment here. If, if I, my math is correct. We have a hundred and seventy-six or so and or seventy-eight in budget increases this year?
Hundred seventy-seven.
Hundred seventy-seven. So that's
Twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, twenty-three. So right around fifty K.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, it would go towards funding, or in essence would offset some of the cost of the village school, so that would turn that ninety into fifty. Okay, I mean, or forty. Yeah, you're correct. So that means that we'd only have to raise forty thousand by taxes to cover the cost of that school in essence. Okay. Which eases the pain a little. All right, anything else on the board?
I'm not sure I understand what you just said.
All right, we have a two hundred, we have a two, we have a surplus of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's not audited, but there's a high level of confidence that's accurate. We have a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar budget increase for the year, and we have a ninety thousand five hundred dollar anticipated cost for the village school. So if you take those two numbers and and the, compare to them to the budget surplus, your delta is forty K. So that means that we would only have to increase the amount raised by taxes forty thousand dollars this year.
Right, but we still need to ask the taxpayers for authorization to spend ninety thousand dollars on the village school.
Agreed. But we're, we're, we're deciding, we're, we're about on the verge of deciding whether or not we're going to allow the budget surplus to roll over. As revenue for, or not re- revenue, that's the wrong word, but we'll reduce the amount that we have to raise by taxes next year, so it means that we would have a tax neutral year.
We have to wait for the complete audit.
Correct. They're, once again, they have a high level of confidence that that's an accurate number, but it's not audited. Um, and it doesn't change the fact that we have to ask the voters for permission to spend every dollar we spend, including the ninety K for the village school and the five hundred and some thousand for the police department. They're all items on the budget and we need voter approval before we can spend any of that. Anything else, Mike?
Well, there, there's one caveat to that is if the voters say no to that ballot article and we're gonna keep running, keeping the school open, we're gonna incur cost anyway. So this, this will end up still offsetting costs.
Well, if the budget, if that ballot article fails, we're gonna have to come up with a way to fund that school as long as we still own it. And that's that. So we'll have to figure something out. And it may require a special election. I don't know. We'll have to see what occurs. Does that answer your question, Joe?
Yep. I have, I have a question for Mike, and this may be an unfair question to ask you, but I'm gonna do it anyways.
Okay.
That budget surplus, is that about what we have every year? I know it probably goes up and down, but I mean, is that?
It's gone from, since I've been here, a hundred and nine was the low and two hundred and seventy-nine was the high.
Okay.
So the, yeah, one hundred was a hundred fifty-three, it was two oh nine, it was two seventy-nine.
That's what I was looking for. Yeah, okay.
And it is not due to over budgeting. It's like sometimes we don't use as much overtime as, or we don't use as much you know, services and those kind of things. So it's, it's not, some of it's weather dependent, some of it's just happenstance.
That was a question I should have asked you too. Yeah, well, how do we get up to two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars left over?
Sometimes we budget for somebody that has a family plan and they leave and we hire someone that's single, it's single and we save, you know, you know, twenty something thousand dollars on that.
Okay.
It's about eight percent of the budget, or about eight percent of expenditures, so that's not a horrible number. I mean, if you were constantly at a surplus of fifteen or twenty percent, then you better really think about how you're budgeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, that's my opinion anyways. I'm not a finance guy, but. Anything else on the surplus? All right, then we're gonna move on. You don't not need a motion, correct? Uh ballot article to discuss the Fire Department Reserve Fund for Small Tools and Equipment. That would be the best place to look at that ballot article would be on the version of the warning that includes Article forty-seven. We'll do this one. The one that says version with Article forty-seven. If you go to Article forty-seven, this is the article that the town manager is proposing. If you recall, was it probably two months ago, we asked a town manager to prepare an article. The chief, the, the fire chief approached us and made his presentation in favor of this reserve account and we asked the town manager to do the research and propose an article and this is it. So I'll read it for the record. Um, but it's our, it uh shall the town establish a Fire Department Reserve Non-Vehicle Fund to be used for replacement of tools and equipment that meet or exceed the town's capital expenditures for a threshold of five hundred dollars? In parentheses, E.G. self-contained breathing apparatus, extrication tools, air bottles, communication equipment, ice water, rescue equipment, wildland fire equipment, air ta- air tank refill station, et cetera.
So you said five hundred, but mine says five thousand.
I meant five thousand. If I said five hundred, I, my apologies.
Okay, just so she gets it correct on this.
Goodness, Chairman. Uh, I have uh two comments on this. Uh, I'm uh generally happy with the language. I wonder if this is the proper place for this article in the ballot. I would be inclined to put it uh in uh in the place of the present Articles Thirty-five. And I think if I correct, uh the budget includes five thousand dollars that's being transferred to a reserve fund that's proposed here. And if that's the case, then I think we should say uh five thousand dollar included in the budget or something analogous to that.
I don't think I followed enough. So the five thousand is just a threshold? So we can't, they can't spend money out of it for anything that's less than five thousand dollars.
I I apologize. But my recollection was that uh the fire chief said last time that we already budget uh for these expenditures.
Eighteen thousand.
And that amount simply would be put into a reserve fund so that it would allow for more flexible purchasing over time.
But right now for this year, Melanie, uh you might have to jump in on this one just to make sure that we're, the language is correct, but um so this year you'd establish it and he'd start putting money into it in it down in that line next year, because the budget's already done for this year. So that eighteen thousand dollars is sitting somewhere else right now. He, he, what he said was I can move it out of my normal budget, so it goes in the reserve and expense that way. So he would establish it this year. And but, but the budget next year would actually, to the um the budget worksheet would show what's going to the reserve. Right now, there's nothing in it. There's his normal amounts in there right now. You guys will actually take that back. In the Fire Department budget increased eighteen thousand something dollars this year, because we're trying to get to the hundred thousand dollar mark This year, because we're trying to get to the hundred thousand dollar mark. For their vehicle equipment reserve, so half of it's this year, half of it will be next year. Um but I think, Melanie. Would it be? Be, I think it'd be more applicable that the reserve, the language in there is to establish the reserve this year, and then next year it would start. Showing up in in the budget line.
I believe statutorily, yes, that um this is only establishing the reserve. So if. At the end of fiscal twenty four, there was money left in the fire department budget. You could not transfer it to the reserve. Without voter approval.
That makes sense.
The the point that I wanted to make is that uh pity has this in the context of. A bunch of articles, all of which uh say, you know, shall the town be necessary and appropriate this amount? Uh if I were a voter, I would say, well. What is, what does this require in in terms of budget appropriation? And the fact is that it doesn't require anything. So I think, for one, it's the wrong place to have this article. And I was under the impression that he was saying that the eighteen thousand was that was. Proposed for his budget this year was gonna be transferred into this reserve account, but no, it wouldn't be. Yet.
Correct. We'll have to, in subsequent budgets, we can. Just like the reserve account for the trucks, it'll be part of the fire department budget, but it will be specifically for that reserve account. Am I saying it correctly?
I think so, but I still have a question. Just so I'm clear. They're just approving this. Nothing is gonna go in this this coming year. That's correct, and that's the way it has to be.
Yeah.
We we can't start a reserve account without voter approval.
Okay, okay, I get that.
With some other.
But what I'm confused on, you're starting this reserve account separately, and I understand to buy the equipment, but no, with no dollar amount.
This year.
You have to wait a whole year before you put money in it.
We could now, unless unless there's a change, the 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 budget for the fire department's already set. So we didn't put in that in that budget line, internally, there's no money in the, down in that column for reserve. It's up in small tools.
Yeah, eighteen thousand, right?
But what he's gonna do in subsequent budgets is that eighteen thousand or whatever number is appropriate will be. In that budget will be allocated for that reserve account.
You can't, we can't do it this year.
The only thing that that that's been done in the past, I believe, is at the end of the year, if he has money left over. Then you could ask the voters to use, put that money into the reserve account.
If there was a significant amount of money in the small tools and equipment left over from the fire department, I would suggest we do ask the voters, but at this point in time, that's.
I I think this year he needs, he needs to buy more air bottles, so he's got that dedicated this year. Uh and then, moving forward, it'll be put in there for, that'll be one of the reasons, but I think this year they need them. So it's not, it wouldn't, he'd be gonna spend it anyway.
Okay, the other, the other thing is if it's in the normal budget, if it's not spent, then it goes into the general surplus unless we. What's the right one? Encumber the money for a specific purpose. So when it goes into a reserve account, and if we don't spend it that year, it's still there, like the truck account or the ones for the.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm referring to. If you have, if there's unexpended money, you can't. Assign it or encumber it to go into the reserve. Only the voters can do that.
Understand that.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, can I ask Melanie a question?
Certainly.
And I think you guys have already answered. I just can't get it through my thick head. They're gonna, if the voters approve this this year. It just has the account with no money in it. Next March, we would ask them to allocate eighteen thousand to go into the reserve. You would pull it out of the main budget. Is that what would you do?
If he had a surplus, you could ask him to do that, but my understanding, talking to the chief, is he has a need for that this year. But he wants to get this established, so future years he can dead, put money in there right in his budget line. So it won't show up up here, but it'll show up in the reserve.
Okay, but.
But there'll be no dollars in it this year.
Okay. I just find that a shame, right?
Empty bucket.
Yeah.
Because if, because if they don't prove it. They, we have, the voters have to prove the establishment of the reserve first. It wasn't they voted no.
So if we put a dollar amount in there that we took out of their general budget, then he wouldn't have that money. Okay, I understand.
Yeah, we uh, we we can't create the bucket without voter approval.
Okay.
Then once we have the bucket, then we can ask the voters to put something in it.
Yeah, that's, it's gonna take two years.
Government sometimes works at a glacial pace. This is a very prime example of it. Okay, so um.
Was the question.
I don't think we need to actually move on this. Well, it. Depends on which version of the warning we pass, right? So I guess we, I I think we should have a motion to either include or exclude Article forty seven. Does that make sense, Joe?
Well, aren't we gonna vote on the whole uh warning?
We have to, yes.
Yeah.
So what's your, what's your recommendation as parliamentarian?
Well, I I I wouldn't have had this on the agenda. I would have gone straight to the warning approval. Uh I I I think we can take it up when we discuss the whole warning.
Okay. I'm okay with that. That makes sense to me. The rest of the board okay with that? Then let's move on to the twenty twenty three warning approval.
Want to talk about the party?
Um I do not. I do not see the need to discuss this again. Um I would entertain a motion for. A version of the warning.
I would move that we approve the warning uh submitted by the town manager uh. That uh includes what is presently Article forty seven.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so we have discussion from the board. Mister Spalding?
I like, care to start?
I like what Joe said. I think it should be moved. It shouldn't be at the end of the, what do you call all those articles at the end?
Appropriation.
Appropriations. I think it needs to be moved wherever Joe said, like Article thirty five, where you should, it should be, Joe.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Then Article thirty five would become Article thirty six. And so forth.
I'm certainly unopposed to that.
I I would uh for support that. I would also, uh I have a question about Article thirty. My recollection was that uh we were talking about appropriating twelve thousand dollars for Memorial Day decorations. Uh the warning says twelve thousand two hundred, is that correct? I didn't check the.
I I haven't verified that the the three people in the office went through the numbers and and to verify it, so we didn't mess it up, so.
Well, obviously, it's it's a small.
I didn't bring my budget worksheet, but uh. I do know that the town staff, we had three different people proofread this. So would the town accountant chime in as that Article thirty, which is the?
I, yes, I do have um the uh summary uh budget that was approved. That sheet um and the amount for Memorial Day slash Fourth of July is twelve thousand two hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the only other uh change I would suggest is a typo uh. Under, in the, in present Article thirty five, which we maybe uh re- renumbered to Article thirty six. We should have a comma before determining. We do with all the other. Appropriations.
You got that, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think. You should be consistent. Anything else, Joe?
No.
Mary Lee?
No.
Bob?
Nope.
All right, so I'm going to read for the benefit of the audience. The article that we are putting in the warning that is pertinent to the village school is. Shall the town appropriate ninety thousand five hundred nineteen dollars for the annual operating ca- cost of the former Castleton Village School? In parentheses, not included in the budget. Also in parentheses, with the expectation that the town of Hubbard and Paye. It's contractually mandated eleven percent share of said expenses, period. That is the article that we are. Planning on putting in the warning for the town to vote on. And that is the only article we are planning on putting in at this time. I'll entertain questions from the audience. Well, the board first. Comments from the board first, any pertinent to this article?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Bob.
I think that should be moved too. I just don't like it down in it with the appropriations. Those. I, that Article forty six needs to be moved up too.
I, that thought occurred to me that we, this should become Article.
Thirty six, thirty five or thirty six?
Article thirty five, and then our current Article forty seven should become Article thirty six and everything else renumbered after that. Does everyone agree with that?
I like that.
I. The only thing that I would uh say is, I think I would prefer to have it Article thirty six. Because that begins the succession of articles that end with not included in the budget.
Okay. I'm not opposed to that. That's a good idea. So Mike, are you keeping up with us?
Yeah, so Article forty six becomes thirty six and forty seven becomes thirty five?
Correct. Then everything else gets renumbered after that. Anything else on the board?
Um. Yeah. Uh on that same article, the ninety thousand five nineteen. Do we know if Hubbardton's got it on their ballot too? Other words, we're asking our taxpayers. Of Castleton to pay that ninety thousand five nineteen or allocate that. Without us owning Hubbardton's share. Can we legally do that? Can we legally ask our taxpayers to pay all the expenses? Not, not knowing if we're gonna buy Hubbardton out or not, or if they, I gotta ask Martha. Did she get her petition into Hubbardton? You see where I'm going with this?
You understand? We statutorily have to ask the voters to spend that money. If there's anticipated revenue, then that will offset the amount we have to raise by taxes, but we can't spend the money without, we can't actually write the checks. Without voter approval.
Okay, but you're asking the taxpayers to spend, to pay the expenses on a building we only own eighty nine percent of. We don't own a hundred percent of that. How legal is that? I'm gonna ask you, Mister Parliamentarian.
Well, I I. Above my pay grade.
Come on, Joe!
They could tell you what our, what Mister Parisi told us.
Okay.
He said that this, it's us is separate apart from Hubbardon as far as this article goes. So there's no way, if we can't do this, if Hubbardton doesn't do it.
That doesn't apply.
According to Mister Parisi.
So, yeah, I I mean, I I would have said something similar uh but not have been paid for my answer, which is that. If uh obviously there are at least three eventualities. Uh one is that uh. Hubbardton pays its share. Uh a second is uh Hubbardton sells out their share. And the third is that Hubbardton doesn't sell out their share, but does not uh pay its share. Now, that would put us in into a, you know, a difficult situation, which would probably involve. Further work by Mister Parisi. But uh I I think that the, I mean, we are the uh. We own the lion's share of that building. And I think there's uh at least two out of three possibilities that we are going to be responsible for all of the expenses. And I think we need the, we need to ask the citizens for authorization to pay the expense. And if it happens as the parenthetical statement uh suggests. That they provide eleven percent of a contribution towards those expenses, well, so much the better. You know, that reduces the burden on our taxpayers.
Can I ask Martha a question?
Why don't we let Martha and these people ask their questions first, Bob?
Okay, no, that's fine.
Um is the, are you all set for now, Joe and Mary? Do you mind if I do this?
No, go ahead. She may answer my question.
Okay, uh who wants to go first?
Okay, I'll go. Martha Twilford, uh Recreation. Um I got. Actually, I have some things here, but I don't have. You pre- you said you had two versions. Of this that article.
No, we had two versions of the warning. One included the article about the fire department reserve account, and one did not. So there's only one version of Article forty six, which I've already read.
Okay, well, my misunderstanding, I thought you were talking about.
And the only difference between those two versions is the fire department article. So there is no difference in the article current, and either version that was proposed is Article forty six, which will be renumbered. But uh Article forty six is. Specifically about the expenditures for the village school, period.
Well then, um. Just to give you folks the information, the petition has been submitted to um Hubbardon. Uh it was accepted, recorded um and uh. I was waiting for wording from you folks, so and I. I I I can't get it tonight. I don't even know if I can get it tonight and give it to her tomorrow, because she said something about the deadline being tonight. Or is that our deadline or their deadline or the state's?
I don't have a straight answer to that one. I can tell you, uh I think at this point you're concerned about uh. The lack of any um language about future ownership. Is that correct?
I understand the discrepancy and and I understand the error in petition. And. I guess. What we're looking for is. The petition that is. And there's a lot of interest behind that petition. There are a hundred and ninety four signatures on that petition just here in town. So. We need to. Move this forward. We need to have an article on there that gives us some sort of future. This article that you're putting on. Has just fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, right?
And if if. We can retain ownership, we will have to ask the voters every year for this expenditure, just like we do every other budget article.
So is it.
Or expenditure.
Intent to year after year go back to the voters to get upgrade costs for the.
We have to do that. Now, as we have. As the, if we continue to own the school and the rec department. And comes up with a mature plan and starts creating revenue, and maybe other revenue sources may occur, then maybe that number can go down. But at this point in time, we have to, we have to go with. What's real now. Jump in with that, with any other board members, if you've got anything to add on that.
Okay.
That's.
So, uh I mean, I I think uh Martha, what would be ideal if uh would be if the. Hubbardon Select Board put an article on their ballot saying, shall the town of Hubbardon. Appropriate nine thousand nine hundred fifty seven dollars for its eleven percent share of the cost of the castle.
What was that figure again, Joe?
Nine thousand nine hundred fifty seven.
Is eleven percent of the ninety? Okay, I'll trust your iPhone.
I think that would be the best way to put this question before the Hubbardon voters.
Well, at least I have a figure now, and I know what you folks have been doing. If that's gonna pan out. Hubbardon, I have, I have no idea.
Go ahead, Joe.
I think it was at our last meeting, uh Martha, we discussed this, the question of. Should this uh continue to be not included in the budget or not? Which is how it's been handled this year. And I think my comment was. That depends on the will of the voters. If there's overwhelming support for this article, I think I would be in favor of building this. Expenditure into next year's budget. Like other than. If it's a close call, I think it might be appropriate treated as a separate item again. But that, a lot of that depends on. What we do, what you do, what Bo does to generate, you know, support for rec in that building. I I have confidence that you're gonna be.
It it has always been our intention to um. Have revenue, generate revenue from it. But it it looks to to wait from where I'm sitting. Um, rec is backed into a corner. The town doesn't, uh, doesn't. Say that they own the building. So we can't offer. A long-term lease to any organizations. We can't wa- uh, lose a long-term lease for professional space. The only chance of revenue that we have is through programming and. That will not make that building sustainable. So it it's like a catch twenty two here.
Can I comment on that?
We are, we darned if we're not.
We own the building. We've never said we don't own the building. So and at this point in time, we have. Not received a single. Reasonable offer to purchase that building. And to be quite honest, I don't expect one anytime soon. And if and when we do, that's when you that triggers the. Petition to vote on whether or not we retain owner or whether we sell it or not.
But one of the other issues is that. The the rec would like part of that building. And if you're trying to sell a building like that. People aren't gonna come in and say, oh, okay, well, we'll, you know, lease back or whoever do, you know, a half, fifty percent of it, sixty percent of it back to rec. That's another issue that is gonna make that. That whole thing just a quagmire.
Yeah, I don't recall the exact wording of the motion that was made back in July, I think it was, that, um. But there was something in there, a caveat in there about carving out a space for rec, if I recall.
No guarantee of that.
Yeah.
In that motion?
No.
Okay, I don't recall the exact verbiage.
We still have the issue of. Of a building. That can be shared out from underneath whoever's there. I E rec. And and that's the issue about raising revenue.
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, I guess I wanna just to raise.
I do.
Order. I I think this is, uh. Literally a topic appropriate for members of the committee. Who want to discuss it, the select board. But I don't think anybody who read this agenda would have expected to find this discussion taking place under the discussion of the warnings. What about? So I think we're. Not addressing the agenda items.
I think you're correct. Bob, I'm gonna let you speak and then I'll.
I just wanted to ask Martha, what was your petition that you said you got to Hubbardton? And that's how you stopped right there. What does it say?
The same thing that the Councilton Hubbard, the Councilton petitions asked you to reserve, asked the select board to reverse the vote to sell the village school. And hold it in town's possession for three years to make sure, to see if we're could be financially viable. That's what the petition's read.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, you also said something about. Not. Being able to lease it out. Why? Do you say that? What?
Okay.
You have all these big leasers out there. Bring them to us.
But you've got, you've got like, we're, we're once again opening the conversation with Boys and Girls Club. They want, they want an extended lease. They want a long-term lease. And we aren't able to give it to them because at any point in time. You could decide to sell that building.
Did I? Did I say something?
Yep, we're showing.
It's sorry, it it sounded as if, uh, you had just said that if we did get a good offer on the building. That it would go back to the town to approve the set. Sorry, this is McCarthy Stein. I'm on the screen behind you.
You wait for a moment. There's somebody in the audience who's been patiently waiting for a question.
I'm sorry, my bad. I'll leave my hand up.
Yeah, please do. Don't let me forget it, Mike.
Well, I just, I just wanna. Continue with Martha. The Boys and Girls Club, they said they want to lease it. Anywhere near the ninety thousand dollars it could have cost us?
Of course not, no. They they.
So it's not viable.
But it's it's a, it's a percentage of it. It's it's more than what we've got anywhere else there. They were offering twenty four thousand dollars a year. To that space down there.
Bring us a proposal and we certainly would be willing to entertain it. I would certainly love to have that conversation. Okay?
Well, just to stick with this point for a minute. Uh, I distinctly remember, uh, David Wolfie. Uh. Telling us that they weren't. Willing to spend that.
Well, they they pulled out. When Tiersa. Decided. She she asked for a particular part of the building. That was the building that they thought would be most valuable to them. And that's when they pulled up.
But I think, I mean, I think if they have a. Desired a leased part of that building. They should put it in writing and submit it to the select board.
And I would love to have that conversation, okay?
That will require, uh, a meeting with our colleagues in Hubbardon because. We cannot make a lease decision. Uh, separately, we have to. Make it jointly with them. But I think we would all be very interested in seeing that, right?
We'll speak to him on Wednesday when we talk to him.
Please do, please do. Okay, Mary, go ahead. You've been very patient. Thank you.
With all due respect, if you want to get this conversation back to the petition. And the intent of the petition that almost two hundred people in this town signed. It included wording about rec. Which your current article does not. And it included wording about keep promising to keep the building in town ownership for three years. Which is very relevant to this conversation we're having right now. So I thought I heard you say two town meetings, two select word meetings ago, that you wanted to follow the intent. Of the petition, even though we understand the wording was not. Appropriate for. What it ended up. For it going on the town meeting day ballot. So. With all due respect, I would like to formally request that you mention. That. All of this is about rec having a home in the Castleton Village School. And the town is willing to take it off the market and keep it in town ownership. No matter what, for three years, so rec can develop their programs. We have a full-time director now. We've got a. Tremendous amount of support in town to make this work and let us try to have it work. That was the intent of the petition and that's what we're requesting you honor. Thank you. Mary Droge.
I didn't speak to either of the attorneys. Two other people did, and this was all. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike and Joe. But this was all on the advice of our attorneys as to what should and should not be on the warning. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke to the league. I corresponded with the league and didn't speak to anybody. And but I did speak with Ted, our attorney. And the wording that was proposed was to retain the building and both of them said that. That should be not in that in that mix in the article, like inflating it, um. That if the voters. Approve the ninety thousand dollars, then it is. Then there's an assumption that you're retaining ownership. Maybe for that one year, that that fiscal year, but you're retaining ownership. So that's where that. Language from both Sue sending and Ted Preese came from. Or that numbers recommended.
And and why don't mention a rec? All your other articles mention what the money is for. Every single article, it's about flags for Memorial Day. It's about the transit system. It's about the senior center. Why is this the only article that has nothing? You're assuming people know what you're talking about and they don't. And they're gonna go down.
I'm gonna let Mr. Mark speak now.
Right, before Mary. Major comment, I had raised my hand. To propose that we add, uh, reference to recreation programming in. What is presently listed as Article forty six, but I think it's become Article. Thirty six. Uh. I'm thinking out loud here, but, um. A phrase such as following the former Castleton Village School. So that it can be used. In support of town recreation programming.
Would that keep our legal beagles happy?
Yeah. That doesn't.
I'm certainly not opposed to that.
It it the the problem with the earlier version of this that we discussed was the use of the word and.
Yes.
Talked about. Retain ownership and appropriate. And and that's the that that cannot be, that's not a good way to write.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's one of the things the attorney said. So say again, your proposed.
Shall the town appropriate, uh, ninety thousand five hundred nineteen dollars for the annual operating cost? Of the former Castleton Village School. So that it can be used. For. Recreation program. And I would offer that as. An amendment. Of. The, uh, version of the warning that includes. Uh, what was formerly Article forty seven.
Do I have a second on that amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we we still haven't called the question, but that will be part of the question when it's called. So the only hand, was it Bo that I cut off rudely?
No, it was McCarthy.
McCarthy, I'm I'm sorry I cut you off now. It's your turn.
That's okay, uh, this is tough for everybody, I know. Um, and thank you for your time. I appreciate you letting me speak. Uh, I am hopeful that the language concerning rec is added into the article. I think that is a great idea. Um, and also I just wanted to clarify something that you said, uh, sorry, gentlemen, in the. In the black sweater. Uh. You mentioned that if a good offer were to come in. On the sale of the building that. That item, uh, that issue would then be put back. To the voters. Is that? Correct? Am I correct in understanding that? Or is it? Uh, just the select board that would decide to accept or decline an offer? On the on the space.
How it works and jump in anybody else that. If I make an error in this, how it works is if we were to get a an offer that we considered reasonable. And the combined boards of Hubbardon and Castleton voted to accept that offer. Then there would be a purchase and sales agreement that would have to be generated, which would also have to be approved by the both boards and the potential buyer. Once that's done, then we have to post that and make it public. And then the the residents of either or both towns have thirty days to circulate a petition, getting five percent of the voters. To call for a meeting or a vote. And I think that's somewhat ambiguous, right, Joe? They they use the word meeting, but I believe that's actually inferred to be a vote.
I I believe the law says meeting.
Anyway.
It says a regular or special town meeting.
Yeah, which would. We would. Undoubtedly is used as a vote. We wouldn't want just the eighty people to show up at a town meeting to make this decision.
Not have that. Right. We'd have to check with.
Well, we'll figure that out when we get there, but we need, we'd have to get, and then the voters would have to decide or the town, the meeting would have to decide whether or not the town. Can actually convey the property. And if the voters or the town. Townspeople say no, then we won't do it or we can't do it. Is that pretty well summed up, Joe?
I believe so.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Uh, I, yeah, my understanding from what you just said is that there would be several steps, but the final approval would come down to a a a vote at a meeting. Is that correct?
Yes. Now, whether that's actually a Australian ballot voter, a. Vote by show of hands is something we'll let the lawyers figure out. My opinion be that it should be a vote, you know, of of actual vote with Australian ballots is my opinion, but I'm not sure what the lawyers will actually tell us. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mary, then we're gonna wrap this up.
Uh, there is an alternative we could consider, and that is taking it off the market.
That would have to be done by a vote of both.
I understand that, and I would take both select word force to do that, but I think that is something that should be considered.
Okay.
That that's an option, but it's not an alternative because the. We the select word still needs to get citizens authorization to spend money on the.
I understand that. An op- alternative to what was just described.
I'm gonna let Sue Day go first.
Um, did you just say that you had a surplus? That of. I don't remember how much, but that fifty thousand dollars could build toward. The village school, um. Operating budget.
But we still have to ask the voters for authorization to spend that money. Statutorily, we cannot spend that money without voters saying, yes, you can.
But. There's a difference between ninety thousand and forty thousand.
Even, well, if we. It's.
Forty thousand goes down a lot easier.
I don't, but it's not that straightforward, so. If we have a surplus of forty thousand dollars that we can apply towards ninety and turn it into fifty, or if it's fifty, it turns it into forty, we still have to have voter approval to spend the ninety.
Which means it would be almost valid.
Which means it has to be an article on the ballot. I mean, we can go ahead and publicize that there's a surplus and it's gonna make the tax. Neutral, but we can't change this number to forty thousand dollars and then legally spend ninety.
But you're saying it's included in the budget. Fifty thousand of it. Is included in the budget?
I don't think that's appropriate at this time. Um, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I'm just. Gonna say that the, uh. The amount that it costs. That we're gonna need to expend has to be for the voters. We are not in a position to use forty or fifty thousand dollars of that surplus until. That has been audited. And that will not happen. In time to affect the wording of these articles. And and just like. So many of the other articles, uh. The transfer station, pretend. Uh, we're asking the voters to want to write the expenditure of hundreds of thousands of dollars on transportation. Most of that is not gonna be paid for by taxes. Most of it is paid for by use. It's, we are striving to make that a budgetary, uh, even wash. And it is almost there. Uh, 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 after several years of effort. But that doesn't. Show up in the in the in this article either. All the revenue that comes in. For the transfer station doesn't appear. It's the authorization. To spend money up to a certain amount. That has to be approved by the citizen.
One more question, Sue, then I'm gonna go to Bo.
Uh, then how do we educate the populace?
We're gonna have to make a lot of noise and you can help us do that. We're gonna have to make sure the voters know what they're voting on. And the campaign on your part would not be. Unwelcome, in my opinion.
I wanna make one comment. I perfectly understand Sue what you're saying. If that budget surplus is actually two twenty seven. Then fifty thousand of that or forty thousand, whatever it turns out to be. Would go towards that ninety thousand. I perfectly understand that. But we can't, you can't list that on the ballot that way. You just have to keep it back here is is what way I look at it.
And you can make it well known. You can tell everyone you know.
Yeah.
That we only have to actually raise forty thousand. In taxes.
If those numbers are correct. Until the audit.
And while there there's a high level of confidence, that's an accurate number. Hang on. Bo, your turn, if you're still with with us.
Thank you. Uh, yeah. So I I understand how the article reads right now and why it has to read that way. And I also understand the importance of not bunching a lot of things into one article, because that just gets messy. Um. But I do just wanna quickly echo something that that both Martha and Mary brought up briefly, which is just that. Uh, financially, we're put in a slightly challenging position to try to. Have conversations with, whether it's the Boys and Girls Club or another organization like them. Or maybe a combination of multiple, uh, businesses or organizations that we're partnering with. It's it's a little bit of a vulnerable conversation to have with them, asking them to be confident in us. That we're gonna have, uh, a year-long, let's say, lease for them, uh, when we could. In theory, uh, get an offer at some point. That just. Uh, and and if that has to be a separate article, I understand that, too. I'm just echoing the. Maybe the importance of thinking about maybe removing it from the market. For at least a period of time. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say I'm willing to have the conversation, but we have to have some. Motive. Uh, you can't, I'm not speaking for me. I'm speaking for the other nine members of the board. They would probably need some reason to change their minds. Um. Is that it, Bo? Are you good?
The reason to change their minds on.
On whether it should be on the market or not.
Hmm.
And we're gonna stop this conversation soon and move on. So go ahead, Bob.
I I just got one more thing. I hear what you're saying, Mary. I understand both of your guys' positions. The problem that I have with it. Is take it off the market. For three years. Where are you coming up with two hundred and seventy thousand dollars? For three years, where are you coming up with two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the operating costs that can keep those doors open? Where is that money coming from? I just, I'm not gonna dump that on the taxpayers. That's for the first year, not for three years.
You just told us, you know, they ask one year at a time.
Well, you, you just petitioned to this board to keep it, they take it off the market and keep it for three years, I'm just letting you know, that's the problem that I have with it. I'm not gonna dump this on the taxpayers, say taxpayers, you've gotta come up with two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, cuz the rec wants it off the market. For the next three years to see if they can raise the money, that's the problem that I have with it.
Stand, but does the fire department have to operate, because our building's gonna be sold out from under them?
This is, this is a totally different.
I think it's time.
It has some stability. We can hardly probably even find for grants.
Let's at least explore the options, at this point in time, I think we need to move on, Mary, um, where, I think at this point, we're spinning our wheels. Um. I'm certainly willing to have the conversation about taking it off the market in this, particularly if we can find some ways. Some viable ways, even potential viable ways to create revenue, but I'm only speaking for myself, I can't speak for the other nine members of the board. Um, anything else from the board?
Dick, I've had my, I, I'm on my phone and I, I can't put my hand up, but I've been waiting to, out here.
All right, Mary, one thing, and then we're gonna move on.
Just for edification for the board, um. There is, there is a big demand for gym space and other space such as the classroom space. Ie, uh, the local wrestling group, they could easily wrestle in those classrooms with matchdowns. Um, we also have an overflow, um, I talked to Deanna Tyson, she was gonna try and make the meeting tonight. I can't tell because I'm on my phone if she was gonna make it or not, but I talked with her today, they need, um, space for their. Uh, college basketball camp. She is very confident that they would rent for their camps. I just think that when we can definitively say, yes, rec is in control of this building for. X amount of time, we can assure Castleton. Citizens that yes, you can relax and be assured that we're gonna hang on to this building and you can donate. Um, equipment, you can donate money to rec, but without some assurance and backing from the town that this. Building isn't just gonna up and disappear six months from now, because we've got somebody that came in with a pot of gold. That's gonna be hard for rec to build that confidence in anyone. That's just one I, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mary. All right, anything else from the board? And I'm gonna call the question and, um, Allison, would you, for the board's benefit, remind us of the motion and the amendment, please?
I think we first vote on the amendment.
Hang on, I'm looking for it back in the notes here.
Allison, so we'll first vote on the amendment and then we'll vote on the motion?
Right.
Okay, that's our parliamentarian speaking.
The, I just wanna be clear on what the amendment is, it's that.
Allison's gonna read it back to us.
Okay, it's this here though, right? Adding the rec to the amendment.
Correct, that's the amendment, okay. I just wanna make sure we get this right.
Yes.
Okay, the original was to approve the warning submitted by the town manager that includes what is presently Article number forty seven.
Okay.
And I'm having a hard time finding the amendment here, cuz it's a big paragraph, hang on.
Well, then, if you don't mind, I'll ask, uh, Mr. Mark to read it to us.
So I, I think before I proposed that amendment, uh, by unanimous consent, we had agreed. To renumber two of the articles. Uh, particularly Article forty seven, uh, became. Article forty thirty five, Article forty six became Article thirty six. With the subsequent articles being renumbered. And the amendment I proposed to the former Article forty six now. Article thirty six is to add at the end of the. First sentence of the article. Afterwards, uh, Castleton Village School, so that it can be used for recreation programming.
Okay, so that's the amended mo- uh, motion for the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now I'm gonna call the original motion for.
Does she need a second, I'll second that amendment.
Mary Lee seconded.
You did, okay, sorry.
I don't know if Al- Allison, did you catch Mary Lee's second on that?
Yeah, I have it in here, I just, I'm not finding it what I've already typed, so, yeah, I got it right here. Mary Lee here, Mary Lee here has seconded, yes.
Now I'm gonna call the question on the original motion, which would be to. Approve the Castle, Town of Castleton warning with the article with the version that included what was originally Article forty seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Mike, you got good notes about renumbering the articles, correct?
Yeah, dude.
Okay. Gonna move on, is there a manager's update tonight?
There's not.
Okay, let's move on, I'm gonna purchase orders for approval, uh, we already did one, Bob, I have three more here, if you would be kind enough to do the motions, please.
Sure.
I'm gonna make a comment to the audience that I think we need to have this discussion at another meeting sometime and. See what we can do about. Figuring out ways to make it so you can make this happen.
So, and, and can I suggest that that be, uh, at a joint meeting of the. Both the Castleton and the Hubbard and Select Board, because their votes are just as powerful and important as ours.
Yeah, that's true, cuz you're only talking to half the decision makers in this.
Sounds awesome, thank you.
Give me a call sometime, Mary, we'll see what we can dream up, because I also think a lot of public education is in order on this.
You think what?
A lot of, we need to make sure the voters know what they're voting on here.
They agree a hundred percent. Thank you.
Okay, Bob, go ahead.
Good night.
Thank you for your patience.
I wanna approve purchase order four nine three six seven to Todd Vowell. For greater chains, their link truck chains. The twenty thirteen dump truck, one oh three, dump slash plow truck. For a total of two thousand seven hundred and twenty eight dollars and twenty seven cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll, yeah.
Huh?
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion in a second, all in favor, or any discussion on this?
Well, I, I just, uh, my, my hope would be that normally, uh, the exception of emergency purchases. We, we give them copies of the, for this order at the meeting.
Normally we do, I don't understand why we don't have copies.
I'm sorry, I was, of which one?
Or Todd Vowell's for one, I don't think we have copies on any.
I never got any of the three in my package.
Mister Chairman.
Go ahead.
Melanie Combs, Town Accountant, if you look at your copies of, of the check warrants. Um, it's possible that, um. Penny stapled them to the end of them.
Oh, yes. Thank you, I'm normally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, there they are.
That's not in the way I normally find.
No, no. That's something new.
I, I just had a question about this.
They're in, yeah, that's why I didn't see them.
And this be a Mike question? If you allow me, Mister Chairman, to ask.
Yes, I will allow.
I, I thought, and I could be wrong about this, but I thought Todd said it was best to order these in the spring. So we get them by the fall, and this is not the spring.
If we, at, in the spring, we didn't need chains for the trucks and stuff, we had plenty. This came up because the greater chain wore out, and so they, there was none in stock, so. Wasn't something I was expecting, but they, all the truck stuff, we had plenty, we didn't order, that's why we didn't order.
Okay, it was, I spoke to Mister Vowell and, and he explained it a little differently, he explained it that they're cheaper in the spring, when you get closer to the fall. Price goes up cuz everybody needs them and everybody orders them and the availability, so I guess this is good that we're getting these now, but.
It was, well, that, in the spring, we have it on our calendar to call in for chains.
That's right, yeah.
And Brent said, I don't need any this year, at the time, he said, I, I've got everything I need, so.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, keep going.
Okay, wanna make a motion to approve purchase order four nine six two nine to Brookfield Service. For one generator rental. For two thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars and forty five cents.
Second, have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I just had a question, generator rental, does that mean for a day, for a week, for a month, for the year, I don't, is there a time period?
We rented it for, um, during the storms.
Okay.
Cuz that one wasn't, we couldn't rely on that, we rely on the backup or the, the primary one down there.
Okay.
So they rented one.
Okay.
That was the one, just made one at the, at the plant.
Yeah, okay.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I wanna make a motion to approve purchase order four nine six nine zero to Central Vermont Communications, CVC paging. Add radios to the repeater, SVC, two radios, one radio, one radio, two radios. A bunch of other stuff listed there for a total of two thousand six hundred and seventy four dollars and thirty two cents. This is for the emergency management, highway and sewer. And fire department, that's not up here, but it, it is down here, okay.
No motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're gonna have to do them, Bob, I can't do them.
You can?
I shouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve warrant zero one two three R for six hundred and fifty dollars. Number zero one one three for five thousand seven hundred and sixty three dollars and twenty eight cents. Number zero one one nine, thirty four thousand eight hundred and thirty six dollars and seventy two cents. Number zero one two three for two hundred and seventy six thousand three hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty seven cents. Number zero one one two P, fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty nine dollars and seventy five cents. And zero one one nine P for sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second on these warrants, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, Mister Parliamentarian, can I actually ask for a motion in a second and call the question on these next two, since I'm gonna recuse myself?
I think so.
Okay. Then I need a motion on the last two warrants, please.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number zero one one three P for six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty three cents. Warrant number zero one two zero P for six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty three cents.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion in a second, any discussion on this? Seeing none, I will recuse myself, but I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three to nothing. There you go, Bob.
They all there?
At all, well, we gotta count them on the way back, but we're gonna keep passing them down.
Okay.
What happened with the purchase orders which stapled to the warrants, they're associated with, with the way I didn't see.
Uh-huh. They've never done that before, I don't think.
That's a new method.
Hold the fast one. Well, they're the new employee that's.
Maybe that's the way she used to doing it, yeah?
It's not. Wasn't necessarily aware of what we expect, what we're discussing today. We're gonna need a date when they come back.
Okay.
We're way behind, it's good.
We're way behind, it would be.
There's a lot on there. Well, I knew that that, uh, warning article was gonna be.
An issue, yeah.
Something to talk about.
But when we approve that, oh, we gotta sign that too.
Forgot about that.
The warning.
Got to sign, now, how are we gonna do this, this is not the one we're actually going to sign, because we have to go in. We're gonna have to go, come in the office and sign the revised version of the warning. How soon do we need to do that? Tomorrow, it could, Carol'll do it in the morning, so it could, tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday morning.
Can, can we all do that?
I can do that, I can do that.
So, like, at lunchtime tomorrow?
Yeah, just let her, so I'll get it through in the morning, so, anytime after lunch.
Okay.
You serving lunch?
Over there, I, I, I could teach you, if you like.
Oh, you could cook something else besides that?
I, I took a loan out, I bought two dozen eggs.
What did you pay?
Can you count these and all?
I can't.
I did.
They're good, go, take this with you, yes, go.
So we're gonna have to all sign this too.
Maybe I should add some chickens again, like they're.
Yeah, well, there was somebody.
This buy and ti- title.
On Front porch forum, talking about, you know, selling eggs for under three dollars.
Uh-huh, I saw that.
This is for the, uh, do we have eight here, Bob?
Uh, Joe says we do.
I said, yeah.
Okay, we all supposed to sign this, Dick?
Yes, no, I don't know what the buy line is for, what's that mean?
You're asking me, I've never seen this before. Town map.
That's the contract for the town maps.
Buy, and then has your, all your names listed, boy, so.
Yeah.
You sign it, I can print your names and your, uh, yes, like.
I just, I just would do what Dick did.
Okay.
Probably also sign in the buy place.
So this goes in the red fold?
You're gonna have to, there's only four slots there, only, only four with zero though, so.
Right, and all the other stuff goes in the blue folder?
Correct. Including the project.
The first or anything is paving, you go with.
In the red fold, okay.
Except for the contract, that's gonna go, and that goes in the blue hole.
Got it.
It's a young train. Eric, I'm not very popular, and Mary goes.
No, I don't think any of us are, thank you, thank you, people, I appreciate it. All right, moving on, um, this goes in the blue folder, this goes in the red folder. And, uh, what's next, uh, select board comments? Mister Mark, do you have any comments?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, that's my snow stick.
Sorry. Um, I found this in my materials. County capital, national financial policy, um. What, what can we do with this?
I think that, is that the part that says, um, capital expenditures are five thousand dollars, that, that's it, just for reference, if someone.
That was pertinent.
Had a question of what the capital expenditure is.
Okay.
That was pertinent to the discussion, it was specific article, what was then Article forty seven?
Got you. Uh. Second, I think in one of our just minutes. We mentioned that, uh, Mary Groby at a previous meeting requested an official mandate regarding CBS. I'm not sure that that's, uh, still timely. Uh, it seems like, uh, her focus and Martha's focus and Mary McIntyre's focus is mostly about. Having a, a window of time to promote the facility and cultivate conversations about leases and. the facility and cultivate conversations about leases and such. Uh, but if you you invited Mary to reach out to you, Dick, if you're gonna do that, I, maybe you could follow up and ask her what her opinion would be an appropriate official mandate at this point.
Okay, I understand the question.
Kind of along the same lines, uh, it was a couple of months ago or more that Wendell Bird um spoke to us and specifically requested a uh a response from the board. I recall Jim saying that you will receive that. I remember, Dick, you mentioned you receiving a response from the board. Uh, I don't know that any response was appropriate at the time, but if I understand correctly, the uh, the the appeal of the San Hill project uh the year of the decision on the San Hill project has been filed, and perhaps it would be appropriate now to simply notify her that that has taken place.
Okay, we can do that.
And and the third uh item is uh, I I have always thought that as a select board, who was a co-petitioner on that permanent application, we should submit a uh, what, you know, what lawyers would call an amicus brief, uh, a a letter in support of the hail and hail uh DRB decision to the environmental court. Um, I don't think we have agreed to do that, but it seems like a uh, from our perspective, that the select board of the town, and especially as a co-petitioner, if that's what we uh, we support their uh, their appeal, then the environmental court. So I, I, un- unless that's inadvisable, I would request that we put that on a future meeting agenda.
Already made a note to that effect.
That's it.
Mary Lee?
I have two things. One, I wanna compliment the flowers and everything else that they've done. One heck of a good job. And uh fire department is quite close to me because of the fire we had back in two thousand ten.
I remember that day well.
Hey, yeah, but you got into an air-conditioned vehicle.
After a while.
So I'm in great support of all of our different departments. As far as Linda Bird, I have because it was directed at me, I have a response I'd like to give before you do anything as far as answering Linda Bird.
Well, any response we give to her would be collectively as a board, we would collaborate on it before we actually have a final version.
Because I have answered it. I haven't I haven't given it to you because you had put up making any answer.
Okay.
That's all I need to, but really, our, our crew is on your side.
I would add to that, the level of support we got from all the departments, you know, the, even B Trans came out and sanded the road for us later on tonight because the road was so icy, but uh specifically, all the support we got from all the mutual aid departments, we called people as far, we had people come in from as far away as Middle Granville, Whitehall, Proctor to support us on that fire. We had somewhere over ninety, I don't even know what the actual number was.
Ninety-one July.
Ninety-one firefighters from, what, eight or ten departments?
Would it be appropriate to write a thank you to the different towns?
We typically do that. Plus, everyone gets a hearty thank you and well done on scene, and it's a bunch, it's a band of brothers and sisters, and we are pretty used to, you know, anytime, you know, when when something bad happens in Fulton or Whitehall, and they call us, we're there. I drove the tanker on New Year's Eve to a fire in White, in Hampton once. You know, I mean, we, it's no questions asked. They need help to get it, and same with us. They didn't hesitate. They just came. So.
What about uh letters to the editor in the Roman Herald or the Front porch forum?
That might not be a bad idea. I'll talk to the Heath about that. It's um.
It was a Herculean effort.
I think we can probably come up with something. Heath's not a, writing isn't his strong suit, but he's got a wealth of ideas and we can collaborate on that. I'll.
Well, somebody who knows the detail.
We're gonna be having a meeting with Heath on Wednesday anyway, so I'll just bring it up then. Bob, you ready? Are you done, Mary Lee?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't mean to.
Oh, no, I don't have that much. The street lay at the Four Corners. Who who's responsible for that?
H Trans. Or, I mean, uh, three months, hour.
Can we make a phone call?
Yeah, has been, the one that's out down there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, cuz the wife said that.
It's been out for a month.
It has been. On the Erica, the.
Okay, okay.
Got a squeak wire.
Okay, um. Are we gonna talk about the dedication page?
Yeah. To these people?
No, we, we're gonna.
We change that.
We we change that.
Just do Gilmore.
That's a, can't worry about it right there.
Okay.
What do you, what do you mention? What do you not mention?
Yeah, I know. We had that problem before.
When I read that, that looked like a no-win situation to me.
Okay.
Um, I'll uh.
Some Claire birded.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You know, it's gonna be a no-win situation. So um, I have no concerns that I haven't already talked to Mike about. So I think we're gonna move on. Any items for recap? Anything we need to follow up on, or we pretty well beat this horse to death? All right, do we need executive sessions for anything? I do not. Do you, Mike? Any other members need an executive session for anything?
Negative.
Then a motion to adjourn is in order, if I would welcome one.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. I'll second it. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine thirty-eight.
We are adjourned at nine thirty-eight.